Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galderlos.
Present.
Merringa.
Present.
Northut.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truist.
Present.
Vanderwell.
Present.
And Mayor Mas.
Here. So for the invocation tonight, we have Pastor Todd Kendy from Grace Bible Church. Thank you for being with us. So for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for the invocation. We're gonna follow that with a pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Almighty God, we come for your wisdom tonight and pray that these leaders of our city would be able to discern what's good, right, and true, and give them a measure of your grace to work together in a spirit of unity that would promote the goodness and well-being of our community. For our community, we ask that your good pleasure would direct our every step, prosper every good work for the good of others, protect the innocent, provide for the needy, and promote justice. Grant us these things, Sabbath, and Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thanks for being here. Appreciate it very much. Well, you have before you an amended agenda for tonight. Couple minor changes from the original agenda. You can see there's bills from two different fiscal years. Under the consent agenda, a couple items have changed. One is the time has changed. And also, under a motor pool request, purchase for the plow, there were two different ones there. This is for the smaller amount. This is for the $5,800 amount. So with those minor changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay, we also have the minutes from our last meeting, September 8. If you had a chance to take a look at those, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Any motion?
Support.
Yeah, support. Anything anybody wants to comment? Additions, corrections, anything else? If not, is there a motion to... I'm sorry. All those in favor of approving the minutes from September 9, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Next item, presentation of bills. Couple different fiscal years. The first one is about $12,000, and this current fiscal year is about $929,000. So Griffin, before we open it up for questions, anything you want to comment on either of those?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and great to see you. Sorry for the little bit of confusion, adding one bill in the amount of $12,643.55 for the old fiscal year. I did think we were done with these, but the finance department's been doing a review and getting ready for the audit, or the auditors coming later in October. And we did have a credit card bill that we received in July that included some June purchases on it, so that one actually got split both between the old fiscal year and the new fiscal year. So the amount on the old fiscal year clearly is being indicated in the old fiscal year. So just to confirm, those were expenses that took place in June. They were on the July bill. It was auto-paid, like most, like all our credit card bills are, on the 29th of July, but it needs to get brought to you all now. It probably should've been brought to you in August, but the finance department got a little bit behind processing those, so that's why it's before you all now. I guess I'll stop there for now, since that's the old fiscal year. Any questions about that that I can answer?
No questions. Is there a motion to approve the bill for the old fiscal year in the amount of $12,643.55?
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Merringa.
Yes.
Northut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwell.
Yes.
Galderlos.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Now, a more substantial amount.
Yes. So yes, definitely, moving to the new fiscal year, the current fiscal year now. Just wanna point out a couple bills that may be of note for all of you. One is a relatively small bill in the amount of $300 to Blandford Nature Center. This is ultimately what the Environmental Sustainability Committee used, the $300 that you all approved for. Originally, they thought it was going to be John Ball, but we ended up with the Blandford Nature Center. They hosted their event this last Saturday on the 21st, and from what I was told, it was a very successful event. So I just wanna kinda highlight for you all, and thank you again for supporting that event. We then have an invoice in the amount of just over $142,000 from Dyke House Construction. This is another payment on the fire station project. We do have Chief May here, who's planning to give an update on the overall project budget later in the meeting, but just wanted to call attention to, again, the $142,000 payment to them. Let's see. Moving on, a bill in the amount of $29,304 to Riverworks Construction. This was the final payment for the Boardwalk project that took place at Heritage Park, unrelated to this invoice, but if you all didn't see, there was paving conducted there last week, so the parking lot was recently repaved as well. So we're almost completely done with the improvements at Heritage Park. And lastly, just wanna point out the invoice in the amount of $106,660 from Todd Wenzel Chevrolet. This was for the two police Tahos that were approved by the city council on August 12. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have, and just offer the friendly reminder that I do know a number of you attended the recent MML conference, and if you all have meal or travel reimbursements that you still need, please feel free and get those to me, and I will help you get those processed at a future meeting. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Questions for Griffin about any of the bills? If not, is there a motion to approve the bills in the amount of $929,403.96?
So moved.
Support. And support. Any other comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Northut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwell.
Yes.
Galderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes. Time for public comment. Anybody here tonight like to address the council? Just come on up to the podium. Or Chris, if you would like to. You don't need to get there. It looks like you're good where you're at, so. In either of you? Last chance. Okay. All right, let's go down to the consent agenda. Approval would be in the best interest of the city tonight, because there is purchase and a couple purchases and disposal of a vehicle. So we have the August reports for the investments, and also the EMS and fire. We have minutes from historical commission and library board, both from May, so a little while ago. And we also have the park and recreation board, June minutes, and planning commission minutes from earlier this month. We also have a resolution from the Grand Valley Metro Council adding Blandon Township. I think they... I forget what number they are, but it's probably like the 42nd number or something like that. It's, yeah, quite a few numbers, so that's good. Helps share the cost, and they get a benefit, too. Also like to set a special meeting date for the joint meeting with the DDA and city council at 5:30, and that would be at the Granville Library Commons Room. And it's gonna be over there, because Marcy's gonna be busy in here with early voting and all kinds of fun things. And related to that has changed the location of our next city council, October 28, city council meeting, to the library commons room as well. Also, we're asking for authorization of an election grant agreement. Marcy, you got us $18,000, I believe, right? You've got a place for that?
I do.
Okay, I figured you did. And then also an authorization for the Kent County interest earned on the county tax collections. Is that a new... Let's see, Jane's not here, but I think that's a new thing.
So I can speak to that just briefly. So it's not going to be a new practice for us in Granville, but it's going to be formalizing that practice with a agreement with Kent County. My understanding is there was at least one other municipality in Kent County that wasn't doing that practice, and when they approached Kent County about it, Kent County asked them to enter into this agreement, so to be consistent with everyone, they're now asking everybody to. But just to confirm, there's no change in practice for us. It's more of a housekeeping item.
Okay. Then there's also a... DPW has asked for an exhaust removal system. It's about $33,000. And so that would be in the best interest of the city, and Charlie's got a memo on that. And then also a plow for a pickup truck, and that is the smaller amount one from Hook Straught Equipment in the amount of $5,840. It's just the plow rather than...
Yes. So again, I apologize for the confusion. Originally, DPW was gonna be asking for the plow and the remount, but my understanding is ultimately they determined that they could do the remounting in-house, so that is why we have the updated memo, or excuse me, the second memo, which is just for the cost of the plow. So yes, it will be for the $5,000 amount, not the $8,000 amount.
Okay. And then the final item is a vehicle disposal. A Chevy Suburban will be sold to the city of Door for $8,000. So. Any questions about any of those items before we entertain a motion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Motion?
Support.
And support. Any final comments, questions? If not, Marcy would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
Vanderwell.
Yes.
Galderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Northut.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Griffin, city manager's report.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Back before you all again, is going to be a little bit of a conversation related to the fire station project. I'm gonna have Chief May come on up, but just as a little reminder in terms of background, at the last meeting, the engineer and the general contractor highlighted a little bit about some window replacements that they had been looking into. Ultimately, it was determined that the bottom two windows do need to be changed. They do have some functional defects, so it is recommended that, at a minimum, the bottom windows be changed. And then the second part of the conversation for this evening would be, while we're changing the bottom windows, would you all like to move forward with changing the upper three windows? At this time, my understanding is there are not functional issues with those windows. They are about 25 years old, so again, in another handful of years, they will likely need to be changed, but at this time, it would be much more of just an aesthetics decision. But if you don't mind, I'll have Chief May talk a little bit more about this.
Looks like if I hurry, we can break the record.
That's up to you.
So I saw a lot of puzzled expressions when the engineer tried to explain this last week, so I'm gonna try to be a little bit more clear. We are talking about... It doesn't work. So the two lower windows, the one you see my reflection in?
Yeah.
And the one on the opposite side of the door. Those are the two windows that should've been included in the scope of work for day ones. They're the same sub-builder grade quality windows that were installed with the other lower windows that have all been replaced. There's air infiltration. They weren't installed properly, sealed properly. The wind blows through them. Those two windows need to be replaced. Why they weren't included in the scope of work, I'm not sure. It was in the written instructions, but not on the plans that the contractor would have to come up with a quote, so it seems to be a human error oversight type situation. Option for the three upper windows, there's not a functional issue with those windows. They're obviously a different window. They're sealed up tighter. They've been resealed. They are 25 years old. Engineer's concern is aesthetically, once you replace those two bottom windows with nice dark black new windows, those three uppers might look a little fine. So is that a little more clearer than the explanation you got last week? So basically, you have a $8,555 worth of windows that really should be replaced, like the others, identical to them all were, then an option for a grant of $23,165 to do all five. I was as curious as all of you are about where we're at, budget to actual on this project. It's complex. It's gone over three calendar years and two fiscal years. It involves two different parts of the budget. So last week, Jane, Charlie, and I got together and compared spreadsheets and notes and invoices, and we can't put a final number on it yet, because there's still work outstanding, there's still bills outstanding, but as I stand here right now, we're between $50,000 and $75,000 to be good on the whole project budget to actual. So any decision you make tonight will still leave us in the black on the overall project. I'll stop there.
Are the windows on the east side of the building, the original windows, or were those replaced?
All the lowers are replaced. The uppers were deemed not to have any functional issues and were just sealed back up.
Okay.
There's not great big upper windows like that on the east side of the building. There's some smaller windows.
But there are upper windows.
In the far north, I'm sorry, southeast corner, there's, I wanna say there are four by four, there might be half a dozen of them.
Okay.
Those were not replaced, but all the lower windows, identical to these two lowers around the training room there, just out of the picture, not on the west side of the building by that ad under the office sign, those were all replaced. Is that dialed in, or can you scroll out in there, Marcy, so you can see the new windows? Nope, I didn't get them in the picture, sorry.
And when we say aesthetics, just so you all get a better idea, I mean, if you look at that door there in the darker black color, that is what the newer windows look like. So just to be able to compare...
Or if you're in the hall and look.
Correct. Well, exactly, and see what the new ones look like, but...
I can tell from there, it's markedly different.
You can notice a color difference.
I think, Tim, you were talking about maybe the windows that are above the equipment area.
Where all the guys are.
The small ones, right? Were those ones you were...
Yeah, those are black like that, but I was thinking of the big windows above the...
Oh, and the locker room there, that kinda looked out over Wilson. Yeah, those are huge windows, and those were not replaced. They were deemed not to have any functional problems like the lowers all did. It's a different window altogether, and those were not replaced.
Okay. So I didn't notice when I went by the two different colors. Is that just one big window?
Well, the only place on the east side of the building where the new color is, would be the lower windows on the training room, which is farther north, and the windows are just out there, and much lower to the ground. So it wouldn't be as obvious.
Sure. Glad to hear we're still in the black.
Yeah, me too.
We think.
You know, it's gone on for so long, and two different lists of work coming out of two different parts of the budget, and there's been a lot of changes, but we've been pretty careful, and we've confirmed that we're still well under budget.
I can assure you, we appreciate that. I guess my question is, is there a huge amount of savings at this point to do the upper three bigger windows versus just the lower two, given the fact, I guess I have questions, you know, is the, all the power washing done? Can we expect another change order? I just personally think it might be nice to get into the punch list stage of this project, so we know what's going on, so...
The power washing is done. The building looks 100% better if you've looked at it. The roof is all done. Basically, the things we're down to now, the rim panel, the ice stand mitigation system, the electrician still has to wire that all up. The wires are all in place. There might be some caulking on the exterior that still needs to be done. I'm not clear on that. And then everything else that has to happen is restoration work on the inside, drywall, ceiling tiles, things like that.
And heaven forbid, if we have a leak, drywall, possible mold mediation, those things, is that covered? I don't cost, I mean, I mean, we've had a leaky roof here for a lot of years. I wanna know it's not gonna leak anymore before we kind of go forward.
You know, we've had some rain, we've had some power washing. I mean, I can't sit here and tell you beyond any shadow of doubt that there won't be leaks, but we've had some pretty good rain since they've had it sealed up, and there's no indication of any further water incursion. There's been a lot of power washing done. I'm as confident as I can be after living with this for 25 years, and there is a warranty on the work, but without getting the contract out and drilling into the details, I can't answer that right now.
Any other thoughts?
So those upper windows, chief, don't open at all, right?
No.
The lower ones look like they might tilt up a little bit.
Yeah, the lower ones have a crank. Both sides of them will open up.
Okay. So those upper windows, they're sealed up, they're not gonna open?
Correct. Those aren't designed to open at all, they're just...
I guess I'm sort of inclined to leave them as is, and we can replace them later if we need to, but, I mean, if it's just an aesthetic thing, but I guess I'm curious, is there any, I guess, advantage, disadvantage of doing them all at the same time, as far as any of the, I guess, functionality of the lower ones? It looks like they're all completely separate, so to do them later wouldn't necessarily cause any disturbance of the lower windows or anything like that, right?
What the contractor explained to me is it was really, at some point, the price of the windows will go up, but it's not a mobilization issue, like, okay, we can immobilize now, so it's gonna be a lot cheaper if you do it right this second. They said it really doesn't matter. You could do this a year, you can do it in five years. If you don't do it at all.
That's my thought. I don't know, is there, if it's just an aesthetic thing, is there any way to just paint those cross things so that they match, if that's a big deal?
I don't, I can't answer that.
Because that's what we're talking about, right, is where the, not the glass itself, but the trim in between the...
Right, the frame and then the cross members there would, on the lower windows, be a darker black, like you see on that door.
Which is from fading, basically, from the sun, right?
I can't remember if these current windows back were ever there, to be honest, but yeah.
I mean, that's just my thought, is if they're not broke, don't fix them, and we can always fix them later if we need to, but...
I agree with you, Josh, because at some point, a contractor told us that everything in this building was fine. Right? At some point, a contractor told us everything on this building was fine, from beginning to 25 years ago, to 10 years, whatever it was, right? So I'm inclined to leave them alone, too. If we throw some paint on them, if that's an option, I'm with you, but that's where I'm at.
Randy?
So I haven't been in the fire station for a long time, so I apologize. Do those windows, those upper windows, even admit light into the office, or is that, is there a ceiling above them? Is that just aesthetics from the outside?
No, no, that ceiling's open all the way past that, so there is light that comes in. That's into the kitchen and living quarters. It's not the offices.
I don't know if that's permanent, but I'm just curious.
Josh, to your comment, the one thing I found as well is that your point about what's the major price difference gonna be, it's that things are gonna continue to go up, and just understanding that, right, at some point in the future, when we look to do them, they will likely be more money. That's not a, that's, yeah, exactly, and that's not, again, that's not a reason to say do it now or not to wait, it's just, but that's our understanding of what the price difference at some point in the future would be, is just the change of cost of materials.
When I asked the contractor that question, the answer was, there's no financial incentive to do them all right now.
Like, as far as, well, we have the old ones out, so it's more efficient to take the new, the old, other ones out and replace them. They're all totally separate.
Yeah, it's not a mobilization issue, or people are already near issue. It's really, the only difference would be the price of the windows, which are likely to go up like everything else.
Sure. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
But it sounds like the bottom ones, there's an issue with the functionality and efficiency...
The bottom ones, I would strongly advocate for replacing. The uppers, I'm on the fence, to tell you the truth. I mean, would it look nice? Sure, but that's a bunch more money. I understand that. I'm sensitive to the amount of money we've already poured into this building to get it right, so I feel pretty strongly about the lowers and the uppers I could take from you at this point, to be honest with you. If I was hearing from the contractors, if there was a functional reason to do the uppers, that'd be all over it. I'm just not hearing that right now.
Other thoughts? Tim, Paul, Jared?
I'm in agreement. I think I have a change order fatigue, like we talked about last time, but...
Some of those have actually saved some money.
That's true, that's true. No, I know, I know, I know.
That's why we put this down last week, and look at the big picture, because one of them saved us like $55,000, even though it was a change order, and two of them were budgeted and planned for, so they haven't called them back.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, part of that was mobilizing the team that's already there, working on stuff, to be able to do some additional work that would've been done later, anyway.
But you saying that there's no financial incentive to do it now, other than, yes, inflation, we know, you know, things are going to over time, but that kinda sealed the deal for me. I see no reason to do it.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve a change order just to replace those bottom two sets of windows, and there'd be $8,050 plus the overhead and profit for that item?
$8,855.
$8,855 total change order. Is there a motion to enter into that change order?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any other comments or questions? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwell.
Yes.
Galderlos.
Yes.
Merringa.
Yes.
Northut.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truist.
Yes.
And Mayor Mas.
Yes.
Thanks very much, and thanks for your patience for this whole, I mean, this sequence that's gone on for about 10 years, three and a half, and it is, we're seeing a stark difference already in the new windows and how sealed up and how nice things look, and...
The power washing did tremendous...
Yeah, you're right.
Looked up.
Well, you know, our reluctance was always, we didn't mind pushing all that microbial growth inside the building, which is what would've happened, you know, it was sealed up, so, thanks again.
Thanks, thank you.
And chief and I have talked a little bit, I know there were a couple comments about it. This has been a long, a long time coming. At some point in the upcoming month, once we do get that punch list taken care of, I would like to schedule some time with either you all individually, or we could find a time to do it as a group, as a, as a special meeting of types, but to get, to get over there and give everyone a tour again, because I definitely think this is something that you all should celebrate with the fire department. It's been a long time coming. A few other quick announcements, if you all don't mind. First off, I've been informed that Congresswoman Sculton would like to have a meeting here at city hall with some staff and any of you who would like to attend, so that would be on Tuesday, October 1st, at 9:00 a.m. So if any of you are interested in attending that, we can't have a quorum, because we're not gonna have time to schedule a special meeting between now and then, but if there are, you know, one or two of you who would like to sit in on that meeting or have particular interest, please just let me know afterwards, and we can work on arranging that. The Citizen Police Academy that was in your packet for information last meeting unfortunately had to be canceled due to a lack of participants, so for those who did sign up to participate, the police department will be reaching out to them. They will be doing kind of a shorter version to still give them some information and interact with them, and then have them on the top of the list for the next time we host this. There is just a trade-off point where, you know, it's a lot of time, energy, and effort for the police department to, to host that event, and without getting enough people, it really just was determined not to be prudent at this time. Wanna highlight another, not error, but another change. The project update under personnel noted that we had a new school crossing guard that completed training last week. That was accurate at the time of writing the project update, but they were not able That was accurate at the time of writing the project update, but they were not able to complete their training last week due to the threat at the school. So that had been postponed to this week, but we are going to be getting them trained and available as soon as possible. Just wanted to clarify that. And lastly, just to highlight that the, um, the last farmer's market of the season will be tomorrow. The first rummage garage sale that the DDA will be hosting is taking place, I believe it's this week. And then the Oc-, uh, the Oktoberfest or, excuse me, Fall Fest event is coming up in another week on the fourth and the fifth. So I know that the DDA and Teresa are very busy hosting a number of these wonderful events in the downtown. So just want to make sure those are all on your radar. But that's all I have for this evening, unless there are any questions. And in the case, I'm happy to do the best I can to answer them.
Questions for Griffin?
Is the garage sale the same hours as the farmer's market?
On Thursday.
Is there a feed for that?
I think it's a great idea. I always thought we had the opportunities for like the Allen antique fair or French mark or.
There's not the hours.
No, the hours.
I might be there.
Anything else, Griffin?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay. Randy, council member comments?
I would like very much to be, uh, meet with Congresswoman Sculton, particularly in regards to our potential road funding issue over Forty-four Street and the bridge on Chicago Drive. More importantly, the road and the ramps on, which I think is a federal highway interchange, as some are calling Forty-four Street. But drove through there again. It's six lanes wide. There was a history where MDOT repaired an odd part of, one, one-fifth of those lanes as an on-ramp. I still have questions, just really where the jurisdiction is that, you know? And I don't know if any of us has considered contacting Senator Wendy Brinkes, who is in quite a position of authority and lancing to maybe help us with MDOT with this. But I think this is potentially still a huge expenditure, expenditure for us. And so I'm happy to be there and I'd like to talk to her and I promise I'll be polite.
Done a good job articulating that issue.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big expenditure for us. And so, yeah, I'd like to be there, so count me in. And we had a great conference on Mackinac Island. Unfortunately, uh, we didn't win, but I think we were very well represented and represented and had a strong project. And I'll just turn it over to you. You're kind of the MML guy, Josh, so you can run with it for a while.
Sure. Yeah, so.
We did well up there.
Yeah, we did well. So a few of us went up to Mackinac Island for the conference last week. We had a good time. The weather was great. I just want to say thanks again to Teresa for helping us with our entry for CEA, with the video coordination. She put together a beautiful display table to highlight our project as people are mingling and walking past to kind of talk to people and so forth. And also spent time up there helping promote. And, um, you know, she's much better looking and articulate than we are. So she did a great job of interacting with, with the people that were up there. So thank you, Teresa, for that. Appreciate it. Yeah, it was fun, so.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, we didn't win, but congratulations to the city of Houghton, who did win for their project. They're way up in the UP. They did a pretty transformational project in their downtown, removing a huge outdated, dilapidated parking deck that was separating their downtown from the waterfront and kind of transformed that area. So congratulations to them. I'm quite certain we were runners-up. Uh, don't know for sure, but we had some really good feedback from the people that we talked to. We got a chance to talk to a lot of different people. People appreciated our project. They liked how we incorporated the library with our downtown, with our farmer's market. And so I think we, um, did a good job of representing what we had going on here. So we also got to make some friends from Houghton, from Brighton and from Oak Park, the other communities that were represented. So it was nice to have a chance to network and talk with those people as well. Had a chance to go to a couple of sessions when we weren't manning the table. Big theme this year was about artificial intelligence and, in local government and how that can be used or abused in local government and just some of the things that are going on with that. I don't know how much experience all of you have with, with AI, but it is kind of a, something that we need to all be thinking a little bit about. One of the presentations I went to was from, with a couple of the city managers in Holland. They're using AI to help manage their waste hauling and recycling program of residents. And then in Portage, they're actually using it to help deploy their police department for road patrols and kind of identify places where they should be spending a little bit more time in their neighborhoods based on complaints and calls and things like that. So it was pretty interesting to hear about how AI can be used for various purposes to help assist local government. Some communities are using it for chatbots with, you know, citizens that are asking questions of City Hall or communicating through websites and things like that. So something that we probably need to keep an eye on as we move forward with technology. And then I also just want to say thanks to Marcy and the clerk's department for the application for the grant. There was a memo in here, it was mentioned earlier, but good job on that. Thank you for doing that. You know, every little bit helps, but appreciate that you and others, you know, are proactive about looking for grant funding to help out with some of the things that we do around here, make it a little bit easier. So good job.
I have nothing to add beyond what was said.
Yeah, um, thanks, Josh, for the summary of the conference. I think, um, you know, if you, if you have a chance to get by Brighton or Oak Park, take a look at what they did too. I think their projects were outstanding. Brighton did a downtown restructuring, smaller sidewalk, or smaller roads, bigger sidewalk, uh, space making. And, um, Oak Park did a, a nine-mile, uh, walking park on Nine Mile Avenue. And, uh, it was kind of fun to be seated by those people, to meet and greet with them. So, um, you learn and share best practices at a conference like this. So, you know, I appreciated the other keynote addresses too. Dan Gilmartin always inspires me when, when he speaks. He's the executive director of MML. And we had Clarence Anthony, who talked about, uh, he's the national president for, um, cities. And, um, he talked about the changes in cities. And then we heard from Ethan Kent, who's a placemaking guru. And, uh, probably not, uh, he's got a little, little work to do on speaking to that large of a crowd, but his content was really good. But probably the, the best thing I had was sectional on elections. And, um, I, I always appreciate Marcy and the clerk staff here, but learning that Michigan is one of nine or eight states that actually do local elections. Most states do countywide elections, um, is pretty interesting. That was something I learned. And then, you know, this lady categorized it into the parts, the players and the process. And, well, I should say, there's a lot more about your job that I didn't know. And I know a bit more now, so, um, onward we go to, uh, what is it, six weeks from now?
All right.
So anyway, great conference. Appreciate the city supporting us and, and letting us attend. That was awesome. That's it.
Paul? I have nothing to add, thanks.
Yeah.
Um, I was not available to be at the EcoQuest event, but I heard it was wildly successful. So I appreciate the support for, um, extra critters and as Mitch always calls them, extra critters and fun things that were there. Just to talk a little bit about MML too, I was extremely proud of our project. Teresa poured a lot of effort and energy into this and so did a lot of staff. So, um, I felt like there was a buzz about our project, but at the end of the day, all four communities had such amazing projects that we're all doing something impactful in our communities. And so I'm proud of all of those. Kudos obviously to Houghton, that was, uh, uh, cool. Their project maybe won because they had a couple of highlights of a lot of snow and a big pile of bird poop in their presentation. They got a lot of wows out of the crowd. My favorite breakout session was about council manager relationships. And I know Griffin's very new here, but as, after hearing a lot of the panelists and then questions from the audience, we're in a really good spot. There was some heated conversations there and I thought, wow, that's incredible. And I was even talking to one of our neighbors, I'm not going to mention which community, but he said, I was really glad I came to this because we're not in a good spot either. So, uh, I'm just grateful for that. I'm grateful for our camaraderie and, and that. Maybe my favorite moment of MML was I was already on the ferry waiting to, to depart Mackinac City and I see Councilmember Steenstra walking down the dock with this humongous frame bubble wrapped. It was this big. He happened to win the signed Lions jersey from the Oak Park drawing. So I think we won. We took away their raffle prize.
I think we need an investigation.
So maybe we can, we can send a nice photo of, of Tim with that photo to Houghton's, or to Oak Park saying thank you for the, for the, the donation. But, uh, it was a great conference. I was glad to be able to go. I know we missed it four years ago, so that's it, thank you.
Well, I've had a couple of fun events in the last, since our last meeting. First one, uh, was, um, uh, and you found out Meals on Wheels, West Michigan, who's having a capital campaign. One of the things they want to do is expand. They make about eight hundred thousand meals right now, ready to eat or frozen. Plus they do emergency meals and they're wanting to get into medical meals. So if somebody has kidney failure or whatever, they get a special meal. So they're in the middle of a capital campaign and, uh, Senator Brinkes, who you mentioned, she and, uh, our state rep, Carol Glanville, presented a check for two million dollars from the state of Michigan to Meals on Wheels. So that was a nice boost for their capital campaign, so. The other event that I had that was really interesting is out at our cottage, we hosted the mayor of a city in the Netherlands. The city is Assen, A-S-S-E-N. It's about sixty thousand people and they have a relationship. That city historically has a relationship with the city of Holland. In fact, years ago, they paid for a statue of immigrants that is in, I think it's Central, Collin Park, one of the parks in, anyway. So we had a nice time. So he was there with one of his, um, advisors and it, it was just very, very interesting. Their mayor is not elected. He is hired by the other council members. So that's a little different. And they're hired for six-year terms. And usually the contract just gets renewed. So a totally different system. But just listening to some of the challenges that they have and solutions that they have, it was just very interesting. So a couple of fun things.
Did you speak Dutch to each other?
We did, yes, we did. Yes, yes, we did. Although his English was flawless, so didn't really need to do that, but just for practice, so. Anyway, that's it, that's all I got. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
I think so. Maybe we just want to chat for a while. All those in favor of adjournment, please say yes. Yes.
Yes.
And the opposition, please say no. Thanks.